Good evening. I'd like to call the East Lime Zoning Commission regular meeting of July 1st, 2021 to order. It is 7:30, 2:00 PM. And I'd like to welcome everybody back here. It's the first meeting in person. I know we don't have any sort of an audience, but just speaking to my fellow commission members and Brooke, I think we've all been yearning for this day and to get away from the virtual experience. And I know, I certainly speak for myself, I think I speak for most everybody here, that it's refreshing to actually be here in person and do or conduct our business in person, although we have a rather light agenda. That's an understatement tonight. So, start off with, well, we don't have to do roll call because we're here, right? We know who's present. We're missing...
We're back in person.
Oh, my goodness. Look at that. Mr. Chairman forgot the Pledge of Allegiance. How dare I?
We can do that now.
As we may.
All right.
Let's do it.
At this point, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm a little rusty.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's what happens when you go rogue and you get away from the script, you know? You've got to keep that script right in front of me here. We have almost a full commission here. It looks like there will be a need to seat and alternate this evening. And I know I did receive an email today indicating that Denise Markovitz and Mr. Liska, James Liska, would not be in attendance tonight. And so, Mr. George McPherson, if you would please join us, it would be greatly appreciated. And that will give us a full commission with six members.
Do you like your name?
You are.
And...
I'll stand.
Oh, no. I'll stand for this.
And moving right on to public delegations, which is time set aside for members of the public to address the commission regarding items, topics, subjects that do not appear on tonight's agenda. And since I don't see anyone in the room tonight, I am going to presume pretty safely that there will not be anybody coming forward to the podium to address any concerns, topics that might be on their minds outside of the contents of tonight's meeting. And with that, we'll move on to the public hearing segment. And we just have the one item this evening that we've continued once or so. And that is the continuation of the application of the East Lime Zoning Commission for a text amendment to the East Lime Zoning Regulations, Section 25.4.3-1, to add, quote, "Should a public hearing for a special permit be continued, the applicant shall modify or replace the sign and add language announcing the continuance, which shall include the time, date, and location of said hearing," end quote. And this is a continuation, as I indicated, of the May 20th, 2021, public hearing. We do have an updated zoning official memo that we, at this point in time, should read into the memo. And I will ask Mr. Secretary to do that when he is ready. Thank you.
Okay. Dated June 3rd to the East Lime Zoning Commission from Mr. William Maholland regarding the zoning regulation text amendment, Section 25.4.3-1. This is a zoning commission-generated text amendment proposal. The purpose is to provide additional public notice for special permit public hearings that have been continued to another date. Section 25.3.3, which includes Section 25.3.3-1, currently states, "25.3.3 Procedures: The commission shall hold a public hearing on the public, excuse me, on the application in accordance with the Connecticut general statutes." 25.3.3-1, public notice. In addition to notice of hearing by publication, public notice of application for special permit shall be made as follows. Posting of a sign. At least 15 days prior to any public hearing on a special permit, the applicant shall post a sign on the premises indicating that such action is proposed. The sign shall be of durable material four foot by four foot in size and shall be firmly set at least three feet above ground surface and located so as to be clearly visible and legible from the most heavily-used adjacent town road or two-lane state highway. When, in the opinion of the commission or its designee, there is not sufficient land area to post the sign, a two-foot by two-foot sign may be posted in a window which is clearly visible and legible from the most heavily-used adjacent town road or two, excuse me, two-lane state highway. The sign shall contain the following in black block lettering, not less than three inches in height for a road sign and two inches in height for a window sign on a white background. The sign shall be removed within 10 days of completion of a public hearing. Notwithstanding the above section, applicants for annual special permit renewals for restaurant outdoor dining facilities in CA or CB zones where alcohol is served shall not be required to post an on-premise, premises, public notice advertising sign. It is specifically proposed to modify the, quote, "posting of a sign," end quote, by adding the following. Should a public hearing for a special permit be continued, the applicant shall modify or replace the sign and add language announcing the continuance, which shall include the time, date, and location of said hearing. Said sign shall be posted not less than seven days prior to the continued hearing.
Very good. Thank you. And with that, any questions or comments by the commission?
I have a question. How did this come about? What triggered this action?
Myself, when it was currently brought up to Mr. Maholland and everybody, there's been several applicants who have posted said signs, the billboards or whatever, and then they have continued the public hearing. And personally, I did not think that it was, you know, fair to the public, the ones who have showed up for the public hearing, and then we continue the public hearing. So, if an applicant does postpone it for some reason or continue it, excuse me, then it, I believe it should have been posted on said sign that the continued date hearing shall be posted.
That's a good idea.
And we brought this up at the last meeting on Zoom. And you've mentioned, you know, that they should have a certain time limit to do so. And we first talked about three days and then we, I believe we agreed on like a week, seven days.
Yes. Have there been, has there been some public criticism of the way it's written now?
Very good.
Um, not per se. I mean, I have not heard anything. I just, you know, remember times when applicants have continued the hearing and there has been public here to speak on that. And then they could not speak because it was continued. And then at the continuance, no public was here. So, you know, the way that everybody works today is, well, I know I do anyway, is like, I need a reminder, per se. So, you know, if the applicant does continue the application and the public is here, you know, for them to remember to come a month later or two weeks later, whatever it may be, I know myself, I'd probably need a reminder. And I just think it's a fair proposal that the applicant do the same thing on their, quote unquote, billboard or sign.
I'm still kind of on the fence with this thing.
Yeah.
The way I look at it, and I don't know, maybe a public hearing isn't the time to say this, but the way I look at it is, it's a kind of a burden on the applicant. And if somebody is truly interested in the subject, they will have proper notice in the paper, I don't see, I mean, if somebody's interested enough, they will come to that initial public hearing and they will make sure they know when the next one is going to be. You know, I just don't know if it's worth burdening the applicant for something that, you know, might be babying people a little bit.
I just, just to piggyback on that, I don't have a strong feeling about this one either. And it's for that same reason, because there has not been the public sentiment that this is, this was commission-generated. It's not to say I won't support it. I'm just, you know, the last thing I want to do, we've been pro-business, this commission. We don't want to add more layers of regulation for our developers, for people that are here, you know, developing this town in the best interest of this town and in coordination with our building department, our zoning department, and certainly in conjunction with, you know, approvals that they get through this zoning commission. At the same time, I also recognize the importance for transparency. You know, we want to really be as transparent as we can be. And I think that that was the goal. I think that was the intent, the objective, was to be more transparent. I think what we have in place, independent of and absent of the new modified language, worked well for a long time. It could be argued that it worked very well and that, you know, to use the old adage, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And I just, without the public sentiment, the public concern, any sort of public outcry, it concerns me. By the same token, to Terry's point, we've had applications that have been continued, more than one that I can think of.
Numerous.
Numerous. Well, we've had numerous that have been continued. But what I mean is, there's been, there's been more than one application continued where we had public participation early on in the public hearing process. And then those folks just kind of fell by the wayside as we got, as we continued and continued again. And they, I don't know that they lost interest or they got frustrated with our process, you know, maybe assigned, maybe-
Do you mean they participated in being present here or?
Being present here. And then it was continued.
Right. And then they did not show up.
And then they didn't show up. You know, again, I go back and forth on this. And then Norm's point that if someone is truly, if there's a citizen that's truly interested in a particular topic, a particular application that's before us, and it's really important to them and they want to be heard-
How do you know the application is before you?
Well, they, we have, we have mechanisms in place that allow for them to know that it's before us. The notice in the newspaper, the sign that's posted for the public hearing. And then from that point, I guess you could argue it's incumbent upon the citizen to do their due diligence and whether they call staff, whatever they do, to know when the continued hearing is for the public hearing. So, I'm kind of going in different directions on this. But again, it would be easier, it would be easier for me to automatically just approve this, for me, if it was generated, if there were complaints generated by the public in regards to this. And there was sort of mass confusion with some of these continued hearings. So, but, so it's a tough one. It's a tough one.
But we've also, as a commission, sorry, George.
Can anybody else talk?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Why can't we just paint over the other, the date, put the new date on the existing site?
Right. So, there's minimal, if not almost no expense for the developer, right?
Correct. I mean, most of the time, it's just like the three or two-inch black letters, which is really not that much of a burden. Being in the business myself, you do what you got to do, you know?
I think it's a good idea. I mean, if someone's out of town for the first meeting, how do they know it was continued? I mean, it would be so helpful to have a sign that was updated. And I think the more you can do to be transparent, it's good.
George has one.
I'd just like to say, you know, that I can relate to the frustration factor of the townspeople. They come here for it. It's opened and immediately, you know, continued. You know, and I think it all, and everybody's got a busy life today. I can remember back when the days when you would show up at Town Hall and there'd be a letter on the door saying, "Tonight's meeting has been canceled." Some of that for us.
And I was one of the guys on the door trying to get in.
It's also, it's also, to your gentleman's point there, the sign remains erected for quite some time after the meeting.
Right.
So, if the first meeting of said applicant, you know, does get continued, the sign still says, "We'll be having a meeting on this date." So, now, if somebody says, "Oh, I meant to go to that meeting and I forgot," by continuing it and adding that new date to said sign, that gives that person the opportunity to come and speak in favor of the application.
Are we required to repost in the newspaper a continuance?
I don't believe so. No.
I don't believe so either.
Which I think is one of the reasons why.
Brooke?
No.
No.
So, it's really incumbent upon the citizen to kind of just figure it out. They've got to call staff. They've got to, or if it's a, of course, if it's a big enough application and it's created a lot of public interest, there might be an article in the newspaper that it's continued to such and such a date. But more often than not, that's not the case, though. So, they might have to call the zoning office, right, to get that information?
Or if they've read the minutes online.
Or if they've read the minutes online. The minutes online would indicate that. And, you know, even in this day and age, though, there are those of us, and I'm no rocket scientist when it comes to technology and social media and all those things. So,
Yes.
You know, we're just kind of chewing on this here. And I'm, we're just trying to, trying to, trying to generate a good discussion about it, make sure that we're doing the right thing, that we're doing the best thing for our residents, that we're doing the best thing for our developers, and that it's not burdensome in any way, shape, or form. Because I'm, I feel very strongly about that. I don't want to do anything to burden our-
Yeah. I don't see it as a burden myself.
Yeah, right.
We're going beyond, above and beyond with the state statutes.
Paint over it. What do I think?
Right.
Modify or replace.
We can always say to the applicant, to the townspeople, "They got to modify it." But we gave more notice than we are required to do by the state.
Right, right, right. And from that standpoint, you could argue it makes us a more transparent commission than most, if not also. And so, it's, in that sense, it's positive. And I agree, it's not burdensome to the developer. And it's one more opportunity, one more avenue for a citizen to drive by that site and have new notice of a continued hearing, public hearing. So, I think I've kind of talked myself into it here.
But it says you can modify the existing sign.
Right, right.
Good.
Hey, we have that autonomy. We have that discretion to, as a commission, to come up with text amendments as we see fit and amend, modify our regulations. We've got to do it properly, and that's why we brought it forward like this. I think it was a good catch and a good, I think, Terry's intent. And this was generated, you know, largely by our good secretary. And I think, as I think about it more and more, I think it's, I think it's a good thing. I think it's good for our town. I think it's good for our residents. So, and great for transparency, most importantly. So, with that-
Hold on one second, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
We're reading the new language. And the word "modify" rather than a new sign doesn't appear to be in there.
Shall modify or replace the sign and add language.
We've got a new, you might be looking at older language.
That's in the June 3rd letter.
No, he's got it, yeah.
He's got it? Okay.
I don't see modify.
What I'm reading is-
Modify is in the first sentence, George.
Yeah.
Should a public hearing, I'm sorry, Anne.
Go ahead.
Should a public hearing for a special permit be continued to the applicant, shall modify or replace the sign.
Yeah. So, they can alter it or replace it altogether.
You're missing a piece of paper.
Look on the back. Flip it over.
There it is in the-
Thank you.
That's it. That highlighted section.
We missed an important side of the page.
Right.
Yeah.
We're saving, we're saving, saving paper here, double-sided. I didn't see it first.
I'm all for it.
You're not alone. I didn't see it at first either. But I looked just before the meeting, so I was ready to go. I couldn't find it. And then Terry alerted me to it.
Good.
With that, we'll move to public comment. I would venture to guess we're not going to have any public comment. There's nobody here to comment publicly.
The ghost is out the house.
With that, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing unless there's any final comments or thoughts anybody has.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. And with Chairman, just a fair note.
Yes.
Being in charge of this new system here in the Town Hall, if you notice in the microphones in front of you, it says, "Please keep the microphone five inches from your face."
Right.
So, if they're far away, bring them in a little bit.
Bring them in a little bit.
So, they are recorded. No closer than five inches.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to the regular meeting, which is the application of the East Lime Zoning Commission for a text amendment to the East Lime Zoning Commission Regulations, Section 25.4.3-1, to add, quote, "Should a public hearing for a special permit be continued, the applicant shall modify or replace the sign and add language announcing the continuance, which shall include the time, date, and location of said hearing. Said sign shall be posted not less than seven days prior to the continued hearing."
Cool.
Any, any final comments? Or are we in good shape to take a vote?
We're in great shape, I believe. Mr. Pack, you happy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Satisfied.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion?
I would love to make a motion that we approve the text amendment. Should a public hearing for a special permit be continued, the applicant shall modify or replace the sign and add language announcing the continuance, which shall include the time, date, and location of said hearing. Said sign shall be posted not less than seven days prior to the continued hearing.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Give it to Anne.
Anne? Anne Thurlow seconded that. Any final comments? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It is a unanimous vote. We like those. And with that, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of May 20th, 2021.
Did you print those out?
I did.
Yes. Everybody can, should be made effective.
Oh.
Taking Bill Malone's place, yeah.
Yeah.
I got the speech memorized.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. Go ahead.
Effective upon publication?
Upon publication.
Or do we need to address any, there's no outstanding public hearings?
I don't believe so. No, no.
No. Once this goes into effect, it will affect everybody after it takes effect.
After it takes effect.
Okay.
I'll check in with Bill tomorrow on that if he's in.
Does this have one of those published active things to it?
I don't think so.
I think that's what they might be asking.
Yeah.
Actually, it may, because, yeah, he does, in all honesty, on most applications that we receive, it's like, it'll be posted in the following week and then-
That's got to be out of the ranks.
Then become-
It's usually published Thursday, effective Friday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's what I was trying to say, Brooke. Thank you.
It's been so long, honestly. It's been so long. I don't know which way is up here. All right, very good. Moving to the approval-
Follow-up with Mr. Maholland then. Okay.
All right. And moving again to the approval of minutes of May 20th, 2021. It looks like, George, you were absent for that meeting.
That's what I kind of figured.
That's what I just looked at. You're the only one of us that was absent for that meeting. All right. Do we have a motion?
I will move to approve the minutes from the May 20th, 2021, public hearing and regular meeting minutes as presented.
Thank you. Mr. Donovan, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. And Mr. Dwyer seconded that. And with that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five opposed, abstentions. We have one abstention. Five, zero, one. Very good. Moving on to all business. There is none. New business. Off the floor, we have the application for a special permit for devs on Main. Candace Devanditas? Devanditas. Devanditas. For outdoor dining at 255 Main Street, East Lime Assessors Matt, 12.1, Lot 102, to schedule for a public hearing dated August 5th, 2021, which is our next meeting, by the way, if you, if you do recall. One thing I do recall is that July and August are months in which we have one meeting in each of those months. So, we kind of get the summer off to a certain extent. So, our next meeting will be August 5th, 2021.
For more.
Yep, yep.
Zoning.
And that's when the public hearing for that application will be. So, we need to go ahead and schedule that. Bill, he's not here. Any business on the floor, if anybody in the majority voted the commission?
I got a couple items I'd like to bring up briefly.
George?
See, as of today is July 1. And when we approved the selling of marijuana in town, we kind of threw the growing down the road. I think we might need to address it now, that recreational use has been legalized.
Why do you assume we're going to approve it?
I didn't say we're going to approve it.
He's saying we need to address the cultivation of marijuana.
The stores.
Are you talking about stores? Are you talking about farms?
I'm talking about, when we approved the stores, we said to the growing, "We'll deal with that later." I think we need to deal with it.
How do you know we're going to approve the stores?
We approved a zone to where if somebody does apply, not a zone, I'm sorry, an area.
We haven't looked at it.
We approved medical marijuana dispensing.
In the CA zone.
That was just-
We have a special permit.
That's correct. That's all we get. We've done nothing with recreational marijuana as of yet. It is a conversation that will, will need to be had pretty soon. There's no question about it.
And I have one other small item. It's on Mr. Mahol, I mean, Mr. Dwyer's list, the political signs.
Oh, yeah. I agree with you.
There were political signs up until April from the last election. And there are already signs up for November's election. It's a bit much. We need to address it. And not just include signs, but also the banners.
Yeah. Banner's held on separate, right.
So, you'd like to see regulations around signage?
Yes.
Election signage.
Election, political, election signage. We call it election signage.
Up there, we've got 90 days now. We should cut it in half.
I agree.
And a finest, because it went on. It just went on and on and on.
Well, since it's 90 days now, any signs that are up right now are in violation of that, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, again, it comes down to enforcement then, you know? All right.
I just saw one today.
I haven't seen any yet, so.
I saw a couple early in the week. I can't remember where now. Somewhere on my paper.
I saw a Dwyer sign from three years ago.
Saw a Dwyer sign from three years ago.
Yeah. Those are on there for like two weeks now. There is an issue with those signs anywhere.
Yeah.
Other than political as well, too.
Yeah, we're not, we're not alone on that. There's no question about it. No question about it. It's not an East Lime thing, but it's something that we can, we should look at.
So, can we add that to the agenda next time?
We will.
Signs, thank you.
I'll talk to Mr. Maholland, and we will have a greater discussion about election signage at our next meeting in August. All right?
Thank you.
Very good. And with that, we will move to-
Mr. Chairman, just another note. I'm sorry. Last meeting, you know, you mentioned how, well, I mentioned how we had a subcommittee consisting of George and myself and Denise. And with Mr. Maholland's issues, we still have not met, but still on the agenda.
Okay, okay.
Was that around here?
Zoning official, Bill, who's given the night off. I didn't expect him to be here. I thought maybe, but he took some time off. Good for him. He rarely takes time off. Needed to use some vacation days. So, moving on to comments from the ex officio, and Ms. Rosie Anheuser is not here this evening. Comments from zoning board liaison to planning commission.
My comments I gave last time, and they're in the minutes.
Are they?
On the last page, yeah.
Okay.
So, it was, basically, they approved the text amendment that we approved tonight. But it's-
What meeting was that?
It was planning.
It was.
There it is.
Right there.
Okay. Yep, very good.
Because Norm had attended a meeting right before it on the POCD.
Mr. Walker, did you just happen to attend the June 8th meeting?
I did not, I did not attend the June 8th. But I know, Mr., changing the subject rapidly. I know Mr. Dwyer will be attending the July 13th meeting. I have every confidence. And he'll be on his motorcycle. It's going to be a nice sunny day. Comments from Chairman, I don't have any other than what I opened with. I'll just sort of restate that it's, it's good that we're back here, meeting in person, doing our business in person. That's the way it was intended to be. Obviously, this was a light, light, light evening. We didn't have anybody in front of us. No public sentiment. But you know what? Get the, we got to take the training wheels off again and get moving again because it's been a while, so.
We're meaning to do that.
In fact, I didn't even know to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So, I mean, that's how rusty I was. So, we'll, we'll be a well-oiled machine again very quickly, hopefully beginning on August 5th. And I will just share that I did talk to Bill today, and he indicated that it was sort of a quiet spring, early summer in terms of, and obviously, in terms of activity, in terms of applications that would come before us. terms of applications that would come before us, at least activity that we would see, activity that the building department, zoning department is seeing, has, has, has been going at a pretty good clip. But we've been, things have been quiet on the zoning commission front, and that's sort of unusual in the springtime. So, this is kind of an unusual spring in many ways, in addition to the COVID and the virtual meetings. We didn't have a lot of business in front of us, but, you know, as I say, every summer, fasten your seatbelts because the fall is coming, and that tends to be, things tend to ramp up in the fall, in my, in my experience here. So, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved. All those in favor, say aye.
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 That was Fast and Furious.